Hey Chris.
Yes.
Now that I didn't put the link in the agenda, is it, should it still be okay if I sign in?
I wanted to let somebody know that there isn't a Zoom link at the top of the posted agenda on the city page. I got it because I went to a previous meeting and got a link.
Oh, Zoom user, yeah, that's.
That was last week's.
That happened to us last week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, we appreciate that.
We got Zoom bombed last week. Very offensive.
Oh yeah, that was disgusting.
It was, it was something.
Not sure I've ever been that offended in a long time.
So how do you, so if it says Zoom user, that's like a good indication?
It tested, that's what it was last week, yeah.
Oh.
No, these are the, all the things that require signature.
So you remove them, then they sign under, under a different name?
Oh yeah. And it's, it's a perpetuating cycle with.
So that's why I didn't put the link on the agenda this week, because I thought if there's an extra step.
Okay.
It might prevent.
Yeah.
Them, but you never know.
Yeah.
Because you have to go, what, the, the agenda had the meeting passcode and the ID. And so the, the thinking is that that's two steps that maybe they're.
Yep.
Well, so for all these names are recognizable.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Yeah. Although it was.
I can, I can, I know who most of these people are.
I was concerned, the Zoom user is the user.
That's a very generic.
And that's what it was last week, so.
Yeah. So if we see those names, can we just say we're going to stop?
That's what I did with that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amanda said he was going to be a few minutes late.
Yes.
I was going to take his chair, but I won't.
Uh, I think we're, they are, we're 6:02. So sorry Teddy, you get your two minutes. Uh, council, today is Tuesday, November 26, 2024. It is actually 6:03 PM. I'll call this meeting of the, this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Uh, council, first item of business is any adjustments to the agenda? Mr. Manager, I believe you have.
Yeah, I have two. Uh, I would like to add an item 4E to the consent agenda, which I emailed to council, which is a request from the Berry Partnership for free holiday parking, um, which is a, in accordance with the, the general schedule we've done in the past, which is through January 1st, and that would be in the downtown area of Berry.
So noted. So we'll add that under 4E, and I think you also said you needed an executive.
Yes, an executive session for legal.
And that will be under real estate slash legal. Gotcha. And Councilor Guston?
Yes, please. Um, I'd like to make an agenda adjustment to add in the updates on the flood resiliency plan, um, to make updates on 1.3 and 1.4 to the flood resiliency plan.
Okay, I'll add that under 8F. If there's no objection from the council. Hearing none, done and done. Uh, council, we're at item three on the agenda. That is Resolution 2024-17, recognizing the distinguished public service of our own Representative Peter Anthony, and Resolution 2024-18, recognizing the distinguished public service of Representative Jonathan Williams. So, we usually read those into the record, but they're not down at the clerk's place. Would you like to read them into the record, council?
I think they read them into the record.
Absolutely.
And thank you both for coming. Thank you both deeply for your service. A resolution honoring the service of Representative Peter Anthony on the occasion of his retirement from the state legislature. Whereas Peter Anthony has served the city of Berry as mayor and as representative to the Vermont House, and whereas Peter Anthony has served selflessly to better the lives of the residents of Berry and of the state of Vermont, and whereas every resident of, of Berry has benefited from Representative Anthony's dedication and hard work to create a more equitable city, and whereas his dedication and hard work can be seen in his, in his sponsorship of bills as diverse as an act relating to childcare funding and an act relating to removal of the trestle, and whereas he's, he has been the lead sponsor of many bills directly related to the well-being of Berry residents, including flood resilience measures, and whereas he's held many positions within and beyond Berry City, including serving on the Board of Civil Authority and many boards, and whereas Peter has and continues to volunteer to do the work the city benefits from, and whereas the city is created by the labor of many, and its strength lies in the dedication of individuals such as Peter Anthony, whose contributions to the city are immeasurable. Now therefore be it resolved by the Berry City Council that the city of Berry commends Peter Anthony for his invaluable contributions to the city and state, that the city of, City Council does hereby declare November 27, 2024 as Peter Anthony Appreciation Day in gratitude for his service, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the permanent records of the city of Berry, and that a copy be transmitted to Peter Anthony.
And I'll take that in the form of a motion. And I am sorry to be a party pooper, but I'll take that in the form of a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, uh, the resolution, uh, 2024-17 is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much, Peter. Thank you so much for your service.
Pleasure.
Anything, anything you'd like to say? Oh, come on, of course there is.
Speech, speech, speech.
Geez, Louise.
I started way back in 1982. As President Carter created revenue sharing, I was one of the folks on the Citizens Advisory Council to the, sorry, Advisory Commission to the council as to how to spend that money, with Jay Hawthorne, who was then the successor. That's how far back I go. And alas, that revenue sharing, I hope will be resurrected at the state level, I've worked on that, but it was the victim, if you like, of the fellow who defeated President Carter, whom you may know. Anyway, I've enjoyed the whole trip. I'm not done yet, and I want to congratulate all of you folks, especially Councilors Guston and Wazak on the flood resiliency plan. I think it's excellent. If there's anything I can do in terms of outreach and whatnot, please don't hesitate to ask. And I'm flattered and honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Council, which brings us to Berry City Resolution 2024-18.
So moved.
So, would you be so kind to read that into the record? Councilor Stockwell?
Yes, thank you. A resolution recognizing Jonathan Williams for his distinguished service to the city of Berry as state representative. Whereas Jonathan Williams was elected in November 2022 to the Vermont House of Representatives, and whereas he has served with great distinction, with great benefit to the residents of Berry, and his tenure was marked by his outreach to residents and willingness to listen to his constituents and council members. And whereas Jonathan was also available to residents and city council as needed in the aftermath of the floods of 2023 and 2024, and whereas as state representative, he sponsored legislative acts that would speed the city's recovery from the flood, and whereas the efforts of Jonathan will leave an indelible legacy on our recovery, will be felt for generations and help the city to survive, and whereas Jonathan is committed to a more equitable and just city, and this is evident in the bills he sponsored, as well as through his president, his presence at community outreach events, and whereas Jonathan demonstrated repeatedly his commitment to the residents of Berry and of Vermont through his thoughtful advocacy, now therefore be it resolved that the Berry City Council commends Jonathan Williams for his service and for his commitment to the democratic ideals of our city, and that the City Council does hereby declare November 29, 2024 as Jonathan Williams Appreciation Day, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the permanent records of the city of Berry, and that a copy be transmitted to Jonathan Williams.
You guys are really anxious tonight. I will take that as a second. You're reading that into the record for us. All those in favor of Berry City Resolution 2024-18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Jonathan, thank you very much. I'm sure you'd like to say a few things. Well, I'm not sure, but I suspect.
I am still.
And I wish you would.
I just wanted to thank you all. I feel as though I'm poor company to be honored in this way next to someone with as great a legacy as Peter Anthony. Although my service was brief, it has been an honor to work with all of you, to have learned so much about your capabilities and your stewardship of our community. It is in service that I have gotten to know so many talented, brilliant people such as yourselves. It is in service that, in the Peace Corps 15 years ago, that I met my wife Rebecca, and I hope to be of service to you all still. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Did they, oh, okay, I was going to say, did they get the resolution?
Don't mix them up.
Thank you. Counsel, we're at item 3A on the agenda. That is Visitors and Communications. Is there, oh, Peter, you know the drill.
You're welcome to stay.
Is there anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to item four. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a letter that I need to read from a constituent in Ward 1, and I wonder if you want me to do that now, or?
Is that to, that was from Danielle?
Yes.
Um, we all received the letter.
She'd asked me to read it into the.
Oh, she did?
Yes.
Okay.
Should I do that now?
You certainly can.
Okay. Um, so it says, dear, uh, this is from Danielle Ozarski, and if I have said her name wrong, I apologize. I usually just call her Danielle. Dear Berry City Council Members, I'm writing to encourage an open, fair, and thoughtful discussion during tonight's meeting about the Juddib Committee's letter to the Berry Partnership. Having served on Berry City's Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging, Juddib Committee, I know the group is deeply committed to its mission, which was officially supported and assigned by the Berry City Council. For those unfamiliar with the committee's purpose, it was established through Berry City Resolution Number 2020-05. The committee's job is to review city policies, studies, and ordinances to identify barriers to equity and propose solutions that promote diversity in all its forms, racial, cultural, ethnic, socioeconomic, and more. The council agreed to these goals, making them official objectives of the city. Growing up, I celebrated Christmas with my family and participated in traditions like attending Christmas mass, which brought me feelings of warmth and belonging. I never felt excluded because my holiday was recognized and celebrated. Reflecting on this, I realize how people who don't celebrate Christmas might feel left out during this season. It makes me wish I'd had more opportunities to learn about and honor other traditions so that everyone could feel equally valued. The Juddib Committee's recommendation strikes a good balance, focusing on the universal themes of the season, kindness, generosity, and goodwill without favoring one holiday over others. This approach is more inclusive and ensures that everyone feels part of the celebration. To be clear, I fully support religious and non-denominational groups celebrating their holidays. However, any city-funded secular organization should avoid prioritizing one set of religious traditions over others. If we don't take the time to ask what holidays are we overlooking, how can we include those too, then we're not living up to the purpose of having a justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging committee in the first place. Respectfully submitted and with good intentions, Danielle Ozarski, Board 1 resident. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Item, uh, council, we'll move on to item four, which is the consent agenda. We've got the approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 19, 2024. Do you have any licenses or permits, ma'am? I do not. Okay, there are no licenses or permits. Uh, the manager, authorized a manager to execute the contract with Atlas Government Affairs, and approved the letter of attestation for the Berry Partnership Downtown Vibrancy Fund application. And lastly, an added item was to approve the holiday parking. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
It is moved by Councilor, Councilor, were you looking to comment, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I thought you were, okay.
Will of the council, I don't care, but Resolutions 19 and 20, we could move on to the consent agenda just for efficacy, but.
Uh, Resolution 19, you know, I, I'd prefer not to, only because it is a million-dollar appropriation. I just want folks to fully understand what we're doing with the ARPA funds and not like, poof, they're disappearing. So if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Not a bad idea. We all know about it, but I want to make sure folks, you know, listening to the meeting, understand it as well.
Yep.
Uh, so there was a motion, there was a second. Uh, did you get that? Both, Councilor Deering, Councilor Sean Bell?
Okay.
On the motion and the second. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much.
I'd say aye, but.
For being so enthusiastic.
Sorry, I raised my hand. Um, I just want to say that when I looked at the priorities, I can't, my iPad isn't working, so I can't bring up the meeting minutes, but I just want to note that, um, my priorities involved infrastructure repair and a plan for that. And I don't think that's in the meeting minutes, so I just want to make sure that that gets, can't bring them up right now.
Let me double check quickly. That was round table, public safety test. Um, was the managers last? No, I don't think they were.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was, actually, it wasn't on there. Would you mind repeating those, just so the clerk can write it down quickly?
Um, yes, that I was interested in a, in a statewide infrastructure support program so that a state's plan to replace their failing infrastructure in a timely fashion, that the state would assist them in making.
Statewide infrastructure program?
Yes.
And that was the only one?
Uh, I think that's, I think that's fine.
Yeah, no worries.
We're good.
Got it.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, council, we're at item 4A on the agenda. This is to approve the city warrants of 11/27/24. Is there a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Guston, dissected by Councilor Sean Bell. You're on fire tonight. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, any abstentions? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Motion carries. It's city clerk and treasurer.
Uh, just a brief report. We closed the quarter for the second quarter tax collection, so now we are going to focus on collecting the delinquencies, and we're also going to focus on creating the final tax bill. Um, the staff at Nemrick and Carol and I have been putting together a template, hopefully to explain the upcoming final tax bill, how to read it, how to calculate what is going to be due in February and then in, in May. Um, we're trying to make it as simple as possible, but we also want to make it clear and concise with, with the information we're going to get. We really don't know the format yet. We're meeting with Nemrick on the 5th of December, and hopefully we'll have more answers then.
So, just a suggestion, I mean, a lot of people really like those little coupons, where it says, you know, here's what you pay on August 15th, here's what you pay on November 15th.
Yep, those, those will still be there.
So, so what will happen is the, the two coupons that are left, the payment due February 15th and the payment due May 15th, those will simply have two different.
Correct.
The amounts will be different than the first two quarters, but they'll be identical in the last two quarters.
Correct.
Okay. So as long as folks pay attention to their little coupon.
Correct.
They should be in good shape.
But we are not sure if there will be a dollar figure in the second quarter as what should have been paid for the, you know, the, the remaining balance of the first and second quarter. We're trying to roll it into just the third and fourth quarter, because obviously something was not paid in the first and second quarter from the.
Correct.
Education tax. But according to Nemrick, we cannot roll it all into the third and fourth quarters. There may be a balance reflected in the second quarter, but it will not be due until the February.
Oh, no, you, oh, no. You, I think, I think you need to tell Nemrick, it's math. It's just simple math.
It's, it's their program, right?
No.
But they're not doing any of the calculations. They're just punching in numbers. It's the way that program itself is going to, but whatever shows up in the second quarter.
I'm not, I mean, you know I'm not giving you a hard time, but is anyone else struggling with that a little bit?
Yeah. There will be no penalties, no interest, because it's no one's fault that the education tax rate was not set.
Right.
And it will not be due until February.
Right.
So you'll have.
Counselor Spalding.
All that time.
He's equally confused.
And like I said, we're still working on a template to explain everything to the general population.
So what I think I hear you saying is that you, the first and second quarter will show what the balance left, the balance due for those two quarters, and then the third payment will include that balance due?
Yes.
Okay. So they can disregard the first two.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No.
Add the first two stubs.
Here we go.
So.
Here's your rabbit hole. Ready?
Technically, technically, um, what should have been paid for the four quarters exists. They're going to break it up into, from what I understand, three quarters, or, yeah, three of the quarters, the second, the third, and the fourth.
Why can't they just break it into two quarters?
We, Carol and I are going back and forth with him on this. He insists he can't do it.
Why?
It's his program. It's, it's never, it's their program. It's not our program.
It's, I just, you know, and I know it's not you, and I know it's not Carol, but it's, it's going, so if, if they have, for example, a blank first quarter because it's paid, in a little teeny amount, $39.16 in the second quarter.
Correct.
And then what would appear to be your quote unquote "normal quarterly payment," remaining quarterly payment in the third, and we're just going to have a lot of delinquent people, people who are going to look at that quarter and just, I would, I disregard it.
Yeah.
And I'd say, what is that?
Well, that's why the insert.
Or, you know what I'd probably do? I'll call you.
Right.
Save yourself, okay?
Right.
Make them do it, because I'd call you.
Right, yeah.
So, no, I, I, I mean, we're kidding around a little bit about it, but, but I could just see people getting confused and it being a real problem.
Because Carol has really detailed the directions on how to read it, when to pay it, and what to pay.
Okay.
We're, we're still working on it.
I, I, okay.
And if, if we need to do a tutorial sometime, that's, once I understand it.
Okay. Aren't you glad you gave a report?
Yeah, kinda, no.
I just, if they could figure out a way, all kidding aside, if they could just figure out a way to leave the first two quarters.
Closed.
Blank.
Exactly.
Don't even print anything on them.
Exactly.
And then take the remaining payment.
That's what we're hoping.
Yeah, you're with me. That's what they need to do. And they need to do that. You know, we're the customer. They need to do that. It's going to be a problem for us if they don't.
We were hoping, we were hoping.
Awesome. It will be a holiday miracle. We'll see. Uh, anything under liquor or cannabis control boards?
There is not.
Even though we could use both?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Go one on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Amy Gelford's online.
Oh, Amy, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
I don't know how widespread this is, but it might help with the tax education. Um, my taxes are paid through my mortgage, so I don't pay them directly. They're paid through my escrow account, and I recently got an escrow overage check, a refund check in the mail, because I guess my escrow account was too high. Um, it wasn't a very big check, but I have a feeling I'm going to have to put that back in my escrow in order to pay the future quarter, so. in my escrow in order to pay the future quarters, so you might, it, it always seems like when the property taxes change, I have to do a couple rounds of communication with my mortgage company to get the escrow estimates right, but that might be something just to remind people in that outreach, like, to watch their escrow accounts or make sure they communicate with their, with their bank, because, you know, I've had little checks before over the years, usually when the property tax changed or my assessment changed, but this one, I suspect, was because less came out my first two quarters.
Thank you.
Good point, thank you, Amy.
An excellent point. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor.
What do you got for us?
Just two, two quick updates. One is just a regular reminder about the new winter parking rules that are in place. We haven't had to activate them yet, but there is a little bit of snow in the forecast, not sure if it'll trigger an activation, but just want to encourage everyone, especially people who do not have access to off-street parking, to be up to date on the rules so that this works well for everyone and we can keep it in place. The plan, the rules are up on the website, the, and, and the biggest thing is to find a way to get informed and stay informed so that when we do issue the forecast-dependent parking bans, you, you are aware and you don't get towed, and we can plow and so that we don't have to revert back to the old system that, that nobody liked. So the ways, just as a reminder again, BT Alert, website, Facebook, but the absolutely best way is through Regroup, the, the new messaging app. We're up to six hundred fifty-eight subscribers, so the numbers keep ticking up, and they're not as fast as they were in the first couple weeks, but really, really encourage people to do so. I actually encourage people from, and I did this during the water breaks, encourage people from Berry Town to do it as well, if they, you know, come to park in the city, it's good for them to know as well. We don't pay any extra money for, for the number of subscribers as long as they're getting messages through the app, and, and we control who, who, you know, the only way you can sign up now is through the app, so it's cost-free to the city at this point. So, again, encourage everyone, if you've signed up, help your neighbors, help your family, as I said, six hundred fifty-eight, so we're, we're always creeping up, but I'd, I'd love to get into the, the thousands here before we get into deep into the winter. We did announce some tweaks to the rules last week after working, you know, talking to our, our Public Works Department foreman, and so we did post those as well on the website and send them out through social media and Regroup, actually. And that's directions on where to park at the BOR so that they can keep that parking lot clear, and that's, you know, park nose-in, right on that edge of the parking lot facing the BOR. So that's where we want the first round of cars. If there's overflow, to then park by the side of the parking lot that's sort of parallel to Merchant Street and the, the very back, away from the auditorium as you're up there on the hill. So that's where we want, we're going to have, we have, we're having signs put up for that parking lot to direct people where to park, but that will allow us to keep that parking lot clear as well, even if there are people parked there. We also, there are some streets that unfortunately will have to continue with the full ban, they're, it's limited, and, and we posted a map of these as well, but those are Spalding Street, Mount Street, Glenwood Avenue, Elmore, Branch Street, Bugby Avenue, Short Street, and Laurel Street, and the reason that those streets have to continue to have the, the old rules is because there may be, uh, uh, at times when we have a sand salt event, not a plow event, and so we, we wouldn't trigger a parking ban for a sand salt event, but the plow trucks can't get through those streets when there's cars parked. So that is for their safety, that is for their comfort, that is so they don't slip and fall, so those residents can still park in adjacent neighborhood streets, they cannot park on their streets, and that's, that's the reason why. It's because we can't do a sand, we can't cover a sand salt event on those streets with people parked on the, on the, on the curb. See a question?
Just where that's such a small area.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, has there been, I guess, sign up for Regroup and all of that, but has there been?
Yeah, we're, we're, we've done a mailing to them, yeah, done a mailing to them, because it is, it's fortunately, it sounds like a lot of streets, but they're, these are very, very short streets, so we were able to do a direct mailing to them as well. We did outreach to the land, to the landlords and to the property management companies, so, again, we're, we're hopeful that people get the word, and we're, you know, this tweak was necessary as we got sort of more granular in the operations of it, but we're, we're hopeful that as we have it now, it's, it's in, it's in a good place for whenever we have to call a, a, a parking ban. The second issue is really, really great news, we were notified last week that we were awarded a municipal energy resilience program grant. This is a four hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollar award, which even better, requires no matching funds, and this is an award split at two city properties, the auditorium, and the scope of work there will include a lot of work on the foundation for insulation, weather stripping of the exterior doors, and then windows, and doing some lighting, replacing the lighting in there with LEDs, and some HVAC work, the mechanical ventilation, and the kitchen exhaust, and that, that is a really great, we're very pleased with that because that'll supplement the work with the Sanders grant, and as, as you know, we, the Sanders grant didn't cover the whole scope of work at the auditorium, so grants like this will help us stretch that further and work further down that list, so, for example, the Sanders grant contemplated the LEDs, now we don't have to pay LEDs with Sanders grant, we can pay them with this, which means Sanders grant can do, you know, more accessibility work, or electrical, HVAC, whatever the case may be. And then also work in this building, City Hall and the Opera House, which also includes a lot of work on the envelope of the building, so attic wall insulation, also weather stripping, window sealing, window, partial window replacement, also lighting in here, and HVAC work as well to have programmable thermostats, ventilation systems in all the offices, new air filters, and, and the, the like, so very happy with that, that was great work by Janet and Tom Baker, putting that together, and like I said, this, it's not just a lot of money, but it's no matching money, which is the, our favorite kind. So, yeah, that was, that's it for me.
Uh, question, Counsel Spalding.
Uh, just a quick follow-up to the Regroup, I asked last week about email, people, could they sign up by email just with a computer?
I, yes, I believe, Chris has been working with their, their, their support team, I'm not sure if they're quite ready to do that piece, but he's been, he's been working on that.
Okay.
Part of it, and so we're, we should be pretty close, I think once we're ready to launch that, we'll do a, a separate tutorial.
Okay.
So I think we're, we're pretty close to getting that, that out there.
And will you, it's a little bit trickier because if you put it on Face, well, I guess people might check the social media, let's say, on their computers and rather than on a phone.
Yeah, they may, and, and we'll probably do, so it, it might not get people immediately, but we've been doing the full-page ads in the Times Argus every third Friday, so we'll, that we'll have it lined up for that as well, hopefully, hopefully we'll have it well before then, but that'll be another place to get people.
Can we also send something out with the really confusing tax bills that are going out?
Yeah, absolutely, if Cheryl will let me.
You think this is confusing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, what do you have?
Uh, we all got, or at least I got, and I know Nicholas, you got an email from a resident asking about the timeline for the traffic study.
Yeah, I, I don't have one, Brian's been managing that, I, I don't, they were, they were trying to get the schedule for fieldwork, I don't know, I genuinely don't know if that's been scheduled, but they're, they're contracted, they're hired, and they're, they're on the books for us, they're, they're committed to this project, I just don't know if they have had time to do their, their fieldwork yet.
Okay, if you could, if you could ask Brian, just ask them.
Absolutely.
If they could just have like a, it will be done.
Got it.
In February, like whatever the time, just a ballpark from them would be.
Absolutely, I think they were, they were starting to talk dates for the fieldwork, I don't know if they'd gone further than that, but I'll, I'll, I'll get an update from Brian.
I think we had, we had asked Brian, I mean, you're, and I apologize, I've forgotten her name, but she was very interested in that, in that project, and I thought we asked Brian to make sure that she not only got the timeframe, but also who the lead consultant was, who the point of contact was.
Yes.
So she should get both.
Yes, yes.
Hopefully, I mean, we asked Brian to please do that, I'm sure he will.
I just have an email that that hasn't happened yet, and I, it's also, she's, you know, been the one most vocal about it, but I've had multiple other constituents ask me about the traffic study as well, so it'd be helpful to have something to tell them.
Counsel Dearing.
Uh, Mr. Manager, one question regarding plowing, did you say Milne Street was on that list of?
Milne Street was not on our list.
Okay, so I remember last year we had some disgruntled residents over there regarding plowing, because we originally were, were plowing over there, but then based on safety, the plowers could not plow up there, and then we were going to remind them this year that we were not going to be plowing up there, so I just kind of wanted to put that on our radar.
Yep, I'll check, I'll check with Brian on that if, if anything's changed, but if it hasn't, we'll make sure we, we reach him.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Counsel? Hearing none, we'll move on to item eight A, which is our volunteer appointments. I don't see, Paul Mutino, I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, I don't see Paul Mutino on the call anywhere. Counsel, why don't we proceed with Lisa Mitch Bernard? Was I okay with that, Mitch? Okay, fantastic. Why don't you, why don't you start by telling us a little about yourself and your interests?
Uh, sure, I moved here in March of two thousand twenty-three with my husband, we, from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and we were very deliberate in our choice of this location and just love the community, and I have kind of a weird interest in, like, traffic patterns and safety, and I commented a lot about it on Facebook, I guess, in some group, and Sam Stockwell asked me whether I might be interested in serving on the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and I said yes, so I don't know what else you want to know, but that's the nutshell.
And you moved here from Pittsburgh in two thousand, March two thousand twenty-three?
That's right.
And you love your new hometown?
Love it.
That's what we like to hear.
Yeah.
I don't, I really only ask one question, first of all, thank you very much for your willingness to step up and serve. I only ask one question, I ask, well, two really, I ask folks whether they have attended any of the meetings, any of the committee meetings, so they can get a, get a taste for how the committee functions and the issues that they deal with, have you been able to do that yet?
Uh, the committee has been defunct because it hasn't had a quorum, so that would be a no.
I guess that would answer that, but you do understand generally what we ask of committee members, and you're, you're prepared to make that commitment.
I'd be happy to hear it if you've got more information than I have, but I'm guessing that it's some meetings and some planning and.
Fantastic.
Service could be more.
Thank you for coming forward to apply, and it's a monthly meeting.
Thank you, that's pretty helpful.
Thanks for your great ideas.
Mr. McKenzie, fix your microphone and then I'll recognize you.
Can you?
There you go. You're good now.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, actually, I'm chair of the Traffic and Public Works Committee, and we had been trying, I had been trying to schedule a meeting since Ken Bauer was appointed to the committee, we've had some email communication problems, we worked through those, I saw that Lisa was going to be appointed tonight, so I'll be reaching out to her tomorrow, and probably will try to set up a meeting probably the week after next, but I wanted to wait until the appointment was made so all of us could meet at the same time. So I'll reach out to you, Lisa.
Fantastic, thank you very much, Counsel, is there anything else? I would entertain a motion, just one, there's two open seats, one expires in twenty-five, one expires in twenty-six, so just let me know which you'd like. I, I'd say the twenty-six.
Yeah.
Let's go for, let's go for some perm here. Yeah, is there a motion and a second, please?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved and, you can take your pick, moved and seconded, all those in favor of the appointment as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, welcome aboard, Mitch, we appreciate you.
Thank you, I'm going to go have dinner now, bye.
Uh, Counsel, I don't see Paul Mutino on the, on the call, maybe I'm.
I, I don't think he's on, I, I've been trying to reach him, it may have been a communication issue, I'll, I'll try to see if we can get him for the next meeting.
Yeah, and this, because this, the PAC, the PAC is still, they're functioning now.
They're functioning, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, so that wouldn't present them, that's all right with Counsel? Okay, then that's what we're going to do. Counsel, we'll, we'll move on to resolution two thousand twenty-four dash nineteen and two thousand twenty-four dash twenty, we can do those in one motion if you'd like to. Mr. Manager, would you like to just give us and those in the audience the four one 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 on the remainder of our ARPA funds?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, so we, the, the resolutions here are to basically provide finality to the ARPA rules, and primarily the one about making commitments of the funding by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. There is still, the other parameter we have is December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six for spending all the, all the funding, and, and we, we will be well on our way to doing that. We have, well, the, the Council has funded some really terrific projects from our two point five million dollar allocation, really across the board in, in terms of all the needs of the city. There's been two hundred fifty thousand dollars allocated to Downstreet for an apartment, nine units at the Granite City Apartments project, three hundred fifty-five thousand to reline the sewer along North Main Street, you saw the, the footage of this, which was quite concerning, and, and you may have seen the, and gotten the Regroup notification about the, the work on North Main to start doing that work, so we're very, very glad that that's going on. Fifty-five thousand dollars to support the Berry Opera House lighting project, which will be a really great thing for the beautification of our main street. We, this one's already borne fruit, which is twenty-nine thousand dollars to, as a, a loan to Central Vermont Habitat for Humanity to demolish Twenty-Two Hill Street, which if you've been by there recently, there's now walls up there coming up. We have hired a, a project management person, thank you to the Counsel for that, for approving ARPA funding to do that for us as well. I signed and I sent to you the hydrology study for a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, and we have a contract in place to do, replace the manifold at the BOR for two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars, and then the list keeps going on, and two hundred fifty thousand dollars recently for a revolving loan trust fund with Downstreet as well. We also did about fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand dollars in smaller projects before I arrived, which were some operational things, the police department payroll and FICA was paid out of this, the first year of a warming shelter before it was built into our annual budget was paid out of this, we did, we paid for a community outreach consultant to help us with the, the projects we were considering early on, and there was a small approval for a bike share loan program, which hasn't, which hasn't actually been, come to fruition, so that may actually roll over for us as well. So, all that said, out of that two point five million dollars, with all those great projects that the Council has approved, there remained a balance of nine hundred sixty-nine thou, nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and forty cents, and from the staff perspective, we, we believe it, it made sense to be very thoughtful about how that funding was used, even though the December thirty-first deadline was coming up, so we are recommending that the Council approve use of this funding to basically pay for payroll from July seventeenth through October second, to deem that money committed and spent. What that would allow us to do is to comply with the ARPA rules, this is not a, this is not a loophole, this is something that we worked with VLCT on, that they've done with many other communities, and so we're proposing to do that so that we don't have to be rushed to make decisions, we can make thoughtful decisions, and to guarantee that, we're also proposing in resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty to create a special projects fund where nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and forty cents would be allocated, and, and funding would be spent with the Council's approval from that fund, and the idea there would be that we would come to you, or you would come to us, or however the case may be, to, you know, fund similar projects as the great projects we funded, and we can do it in a thoughtful way, and so that's why we're bringing this to you today, to meet our obligations of, of the Treasury Department, with the full intent being that this nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and forty cents would retain its intent, which is to fund long-term capital-type needs of the city, so that's, that's my spiel.
Mr. Booton, did you have a question?
Yeah, did you say there was a video of the pipes?
There was, yeah, there is, there was when we did the sewer lining, yeah, we had.
Okay, it's not the one from, from Matheson to Prospect?
No.
No, no, no.
We have not done that one yet. We'll call you.
Yeah, this was, this was video done after the flood that the state paid for, and they found the pipes were like heart-shaped, which they're not supposed to be.
So, I guess the only question I have is thinking about accounting rules, if the city, if we ran a general fund deficit for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, would we then have to clawback some of the, not clawback. would we then have to claw back some of the, not claw back in terms of returning to treasury? I think the answer to that is clearly no. But if we ran $100,000 fund deficit, would we have to take 100, you know, how do you transfer money out of a general fund that doesn't exist? So would we have to, would we have to take the 100,000 back to retire the deficit? And then could we then move, you know, the 800 and change?
My understanding is this would be protected as its own separate fund.
Okay.
So this would be, this would be, this would remain for that sole purpose of capital-type projects.
Yep, and, and I fully agree with that. I'm just trying to think through the mechanics of it if we happen to run a general fund deficit, but then we've essentially moved money out of the general fund that wasn't actually there. Well, it might be a good, maybe, I guess this is the answer, but, I mean, either way, it would be, you know, neither way would be a disaster. I'm just thinking about how funding counting works, so. Any other questions, counsel? Yes?
So I, I like the idea. Concern that I have is in the creation of the future, future special projects fund or special projects fund. The, in the first sentence, it says, "The City of Berry recognizes the need for flexibility in addressing emerging opportunities, unforeseen needs, and special initiatives." And I guess my concern is, just as I had a concern with spending money on the manifold at the BOR, I think some of the things that are unforeseen are actually operating expenses, and so I'm concerned that they're really ongoing operating expenses. And so I don't want us to get into the habit of using special projects funds for things that are actually for ongoing.
Preventative maintenance, yeah.
And so I think we have to be very clear about what we mean by unforeseen circumstances. So, and I don't know if we should be very clear and define that here, or if we can have some kind of understanding, but I am very concerned that we're going to spend $900,000 in a heartbeat if we.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great question, counsel. I think what we were thinking, and I completely agree with you on, on a policy perspective, we were thinking of things like the sewer lining, which was, we, we were not expecting to spend $355,000 on sewer lining until we saw that video and saw the risk. So I, I agree with you. I think it certainly would, however the council wishes to define it, but I, I, I'm in complete agreement in terms of the intent that you're, that you're projecting on that, on the, on the special projects fund, yeah.
So my follow-up to that is, do we need to be more clear about what unforeseen circumstances are?
We could, and then we could either do it in the resolution, or we could bring, I could bring back a policy to the council about the fund, since it's a new fund, and we can, we can hash it out, and it can be a city council policy. If that's, if that's, if people are comfortable with that.
We settle with that, January, February. I mean, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, but for example, if the, I don't want to jinx us, if the Furness Set Alumni Hall, where, you know, there are capital projects in the city where we know we have infrastructure that is, that doesn't owe us anything, and quite frankly, that could fail anytime. So I just want to be a little careful. I agree in principle with what you're saying, that you need to have, you know, a robust capital fund that can take care of even $100,000 unanticipated immediate need. But I just want to be a little careful about saying, you know, a hard no. I mean, a policy is a guideline anyway. So I, I agree with what you're saying, and I agree with the philosophical approach. But as we look around at even pieces of equipment that we know could fail, we don't expect them to, but we know that they've, they're past their estimated useful life, you know, we just have to keep that in mind. Counsel, a question?
So a couple of questions about this. Is it your intention to treat this essentially as a sinking fund? Once it's spent out, we do away with the entire special projects fund, or do you intend to find more money for it?
I, my intent would be that it's a sinking fund that, you know, this would typically be, you know, a lot of the projects we funded out of this would typically be funded out of a capital improvements project fund. So I think that this is, this is a special, unique situation for this type of funding. So I would imagine that this would run its course, and, and then we just have a capital projects fund.
And a follow-up that may, in my head, I was thinking my address, because some of Councilor Spalding's questions, which is, what is your sort of plan for presenting staff recommendations for spending out of this fund? Do you think, wait four months and then we'll present you a whole list, a whole menu to order off of, or are we going to spend this out as things come up?
I, I think it's, it's, it's hard to predict, right? So if there's, if there's something emergent that comes up, then, then we would come to you right away. I, I don't think there's any, part of the reason we're doing this is so we don't have to be, you know, frankly, like burned through it, right? We can be thoughtful about how it's spent, prioritize it, and, and make it last longer, right? Because we know that there may be, you know, there may be an issue that emerges in June that we don't know about today that this funding is really useful for. So we would, you know, I think it's hard to predict one way or the other, but what we do plan to, at least from the staff level, propose is similar-type projects, which are one-time, non-recurring, non-operational things that, that come up. And we certainly have a couple of ideas already that just have taken time to develop. So for example, I've mentioned to the council, one of them was cemetery software, that all our cemetery records are on, in like binders, and we keep tons of records for the same lot. And we are, you know, I worry about when Donnie retires, who's gonna know where everyone's buried, right? And so it may be expensive to, you know, hire.
A couple of them.
Yeah. So, you know, it might be very expensive, like this, this, the type of software that you may pay, making up a number, $50,000, right, to purchase, upload all the data, all the maps, and then the maintenance fee is 3,000 bucks, right? And so that's something that we would love to do with this type of funding, right? You pay the initial, the initial fee, right? So I think it'll depend on, on how needs arise. It's not our intent at this point to come to and say by, you know, by June, we're gonna have proposals for all of this. I think we evaluate the needs as they come. We try to find further, try to find other funding sources. We try to view ARPA at the staff level as an absolute last resort, and that's probably the same way we would continue to, to measure projects. We would, we would make this sort of a last resort, because it's, it's flexible money. And, yeah. I don't know if I answered it.
Mostly, yes.
Somewhat, okay.
Counsel, what was that?
Yeah, just to explain what's happening here, is, you know, you started by saying it's not a budgeting loophole. It, it's a budgeting trick, is basically what we're doing here, one that is sanctioned and precedent by VLCT. ARPA rules dictate that we have to decide how we are going to spend the ARPA money by the end of next month. Obviously, we are not there yet. So what we are doing here is taking the remaining ARPA balance, which is that $969,000. We're spending that officially on payroll, so that we are in compliance with the treasury rules. And then we're basically just creating a second bank account where that $969,000 of general fund is going to live, so that the council, as Nicholas said, does not have to burn through the money, does not have to make a quick, potentially uninformed decision, just because the money has to be decided by the end of next month. So it's basically just moving, column A has to be decided by the end of next month. So we're just moving it to column B to give ourselves more time to figure out how to use the money.
Perfect. Or behind door number two, we could rush through it and make dumb decisions and, and waste the money.
Either way.
And Treasury actually gave municipalities $10 million worth of permission to do exactly that. You know, the, so congratulations, Dawn, on actually reading through the Treasury regulations, all 272 pages. I made it about three-quarters of the way through, and I'm like, I'm not finishing this. This is Dawn's job. But no, it, it's a good use of the funds, because otherwise you are. You're rushing, you're feeling the pressure to rush through things and spend money that you might wish a year or 18 months from now, you had to, you had to do over.
Right.
So, you know, the, the projects that the council did approve, you saw the list of them there. This is a great memo, by the way. Could we get that in the docs section on the webpage?
Absolutely.
Just so folks. And then actually, what you could do is even add this last 969 to it.
Yep.
And then folks could see what we did with our ARPA funds. So I thought, you know, the council tried to be thoughtful in terms of the projects that they did use ARPA funds for, and, but again, we wanted to be thoughtful. So I think this is a great resolution. Is there a motion to approve Resolutions 2024-19 and 2024-20, moved by Councilor Stockwell, seconded by Councilor Sean Bell? Is there any other discussion, counsel? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, we will move to item 8D on the agenda. I'd like, if I could, to separate that into two parts, and I'll just issue, you know, an apology to those watching, because everybody expects us to be a very heated discussion. So I'll apologize in advance, because it's not going to be. It's going to be respectful, and if you don't want to remain respectful, we'll just boot you out of the meeting. It's as simple as that. But counsel, I think one thing, I have no intention of getting into any of the content of the letter that was sent to the Berry Partnership. I just want to have a clear understanding from the council. My understanding of committees is that they are advisory to the city council. Now, we have, we have committees that by definition, for example, the DRB, the DRB has to communicate by vote, they have to communicate directly with the applicant. That is not the case with most committees. Most committees are advisory in nature, they come to the council with a specific recommendation, and then the council speaks for the City of Berry. So I just want to be clear with the council. Is this your understanding as well? That if a city committee wants to communicate on behalf of the city, then they need to come to the city council with that letter? Yes, Counsel Spalding?
I don't, I mean, I agree with you, and at the same time, I don't think that the committee is trying to speak on behalf of the city. I think that with all due respect to the article in the paper, I think that that wasn't the impression that I got. And I think that the intent of sending a letter was more educational in nature, and how can we be more inclusive? And so I don't think that there was an intention to speak on behalf of the city, and maybe that intent did not land the way that it was, you know, maybe the impact of it wasn't the way that it was intended. That was not my impression, so.
But would you prefer, I mean, it's unusual that we have any committee, and, you know, this happens to be the, this committee, but I'm not aware, I went back through the records, I'm not aware of instances where we ask a city committee to communicate with folks, other than, of course, if it's by definition, like the DRB, where that's part of their charge. You know, my preference would be if the, if any of our committees, it doesn't matter whether it's traffic advisory, if they need to take a position, or they're taking a position, that could be construed as a position of the city, but averaged with the fact that they are an extension of the city council, not the equal of the city council, not even close. They are an advisory committee to the city council, and that goes for all of our committees. My preference would be, if they are going to send a letter, taking a position, I'd like to see it first, because they are advisory to the council. Yes, Counsel Deering?
I also thought in my time on council that it was advisory roles, that if someone were to send a letter with their opinion of, from a committee, that then, then reflects the council and the city. And I was a little disappointed how this transpired and how things.
I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I don't want to, I don't want to make it personal to this committee. I want, I just want, this is a discussion that I'm having with the council to say, look, when we have these committees, if they're going to take public positions on things and write to third parties, would you prefer that that communication comes to the council first? It's just, it's a question to the council, not to anyone in the audience, to the council members that I serve with. Counsel Stockwell?
Actually, I think Ellen Kay was first, and then me.
I'm sorry?
Ellen Kay has her hand up, and then me.
Ellen Kay, did you have something you wanted to say?
I do, actually, yes. So I am, I serve on this committee, this particular committee. Our committee has a history of working directly with different entities in the city on issues of inclusion and equity, including, including using the Equity Impact Assessment Tool. We've, we've gone to, we've gone to, I'm trying to remember all of them, the Planning Commission, we've worked with the police chief, we have conducted discussions and workshops, and particularly, we have had a back-and-forth relationship with the partnership, and, and have had some meetings together. So this was a continuation of those relationships. And that's, yeah, this committee is tasked with looking at things that the city does and groups funded by the city does, and working in an educational way to intervene there and talk with folks. So that's what I, I see this as.
Yeah, I agree with you on the assessment tool, because that was something that did come to the council as advisory in nature. Council did approve it, and council did encourage its distribution, and still does. This is, I, like I said, this is just a conversation with the council members that I serve with. Is it your preference that if committee members are, that if any of our committees are going to take a position on behalf of the city, that that communication comes to the city council first? I would prefer that it does. Yes?
I disagree. I mean, I was just thinking about the cow pasture committee, right? Because they're the least offensive committee in the world, and they're wonderful. So if they want to go do something related to the cow pasture, unless it requires the city to, to respond in some way, I would think I would be fine with that, and with other committees like. And I assume that they are actually, that committees are doing what they need to be doing in terms of communication. I think more like, I agree with Counselor Spalding, that I didn't see this as an official city position. I saw this as a position of the Jedi Committee. And to me, that, that they could say that and request that, seems like they can request it. The cow pasture could go to local merchants and say, we'd like you to give $1,000. It's probably not going to happen, but they could do that, right? In that case, I probably would want to know. But, so I don't, I don't know. I think it's a really interesting question, Mayor.
Well, then, we don't have to solve the world's problems tonight. We can, council can think about it, and I can ask you again in a month or so. Counsel Spalding?
I actually would love to have a larger conversation about committees and their charges, and I think that's part of what this particular committee has been asking for, for some very clear direction, and, and that's why it's on the agenda to approve the charge. And my apologies for not getting back to you sooner. I just checked my email, and the chair was hoping that we could just approve the report that you have in your packet that we were presented when the chair was here, and in the direction that that committee wants to move in, reviewing ordinances and continuing educational outreach. And so I think a larger conversation, not just for this particular committee, but what are the committee charges? What are the expectations for committee members? What is the expectation for the committee to report back to the council and when? I think those are all things that are, they seem a bit, a little bit nebulous to me. And maybe there are other committees that have very clear charges, but I can't seem to find anything about that. So if there are committees that have those, wonderful, but it doesn't seem to me that all of them do, and I think it's something that we really should have a fuller discussion about.
Okay. Mayor, if I may. Yes. So the, I think the charges are a great idea, and the council directed me to get the committee started on that. I know this Jedi B Committee did get going on it. The Buildings and Facilities Committee, I know, has been, they invited me to their meeting to, to sort of brainstorm about what their charge is. I know of a handful of other committees that started to think about it. So I think that there are different phases of the process, but I, I agree that having committees without sort of a rudder and direction is, is not good for anyone. It, you know, I, I just want to weigh in on the, the letter issue, and I, I actually support committees coming to the council with letters, and the reason may surprise you, and it's probably because I have to live in this stuff frequently, but issues of liability and risk. And, and we have, unfortunately, we have to think about that all the time in many of the things we do in the city. So it's nothing, you know, my, my position on it is less whether there's a negative article in the Times-Argers about what a letter the committee does, it's whether, does that letter, because it's coming from a city-appointed body, you know, if it had been a different tone, does it become litigation issue? if it had been a different tone, does it become litigation issue, right? And, and I know that, that, you know, it may seem dramatic, but that's unfortunately, we just have to think about stuff like that all the time. And Counselor Stockwell, to your point, very innocuous point about the cow pasture asking for donations, you know, I worry about that stuff from a different perspective. Does it look like the city seeking favoritism from, or, you know, a gift from a vendor for favoritism or for favorable treatment? So I actually, as generous as many of our merchants are, I sometimes, you know, I instruct staff not to seek some of those donations because I don't want there to be an appearance of if you donate, you will get favorable treatment on your zoning issue, that type of thing.
Free parking for the rest of your life.
Exactly. So that's the, I just want to weigh in on that very boring administrative reason why I think it's important for committees to, if they do communicate something that even tangentially touches sort of a city position, I, I would prefer that they come to the council so that we, we can frankly vet it and we can give you an opinion whether it, you know, conflicts with another policy or does it create a risk or liability. So I just want to weigh in.
Excellent points.
So, thank you.
Counselor Gussen.
I think some of the conversation tonight around committees doing, doing their work, communicating with other groups, other organizations within the city, that is some of what they're going to have to do in order to be effective, public bodies and pursue the charges that they are, well, that they're developing. And I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Spalding that we really do need to move forward. So, so manager, I would be, I would be in support of maybe giving some of the committees that are moving more slowly a deadline on getting those charges back to council. And we're in a sort of a gray area over what does it mean to take a position on behalf of the city and what are examples of that and what are simply examples of a committee doing its work? I can think of a number of committees that may apply for small grant funding. And in the grant narratives, you could describe those grant narratives as taking a position on behalf of the city, or you could describe them as simply seeking to further the activity. It is a, it is a line that is somewhat ill-defined and I think we're hearing different perspectives on it from council this evening. So I guess I would like further clarity on where we all see that line as being. And I would, I would support it being written down and shared clearly and freely among anyone who, who serves on a committee and on committees so that when a committee moves forward, it has its charge, it has its scope of work within that charge and what they can pursue and what they should come back to council for. And I also wholeheartedly support Counselor Spalding's suggestion that there should be regular check-ins from committees so they can touch back to council, say, hey, we've been doing this great work, we'd love to do this, here's what's next, both so they can get their day in the sun, there are some committees doing some phenomenal work, and also so that we can just continue that communication so they can be effective at their, at their work, so.
Okay. All good suggestions. So counsel, what do we move on to? I think you had in your packet, Agenda Item 8D, in November 26, 2024. This is the Berry City Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion and Loan Committee Work Plan 2025. I had seen this document before, I think most of you have. What I had not seen is the list of priorities. And I'll be very honest with you, I found the list of priorities overreaching at best. You know, so many of them are, they're operation stuff. They're not, some of these are not even things that, that the council would be making decisions on because they're clearly, they're clearly operations. So I'd like to, personally, I'd like to have, and I think some things are best if they simmer and if you have a chance to reflect and if you have a chance to think. I've certainly been doing a lot of thinking this week and gone back and forth on a few things, but, you know, consistently, like I said, I found much of this, I mean, first of all, there are certain statements that are made that just simply aren't accurate. And I'd like to give our department heads and manager the opportunity to weigh in a lot of these things that I look as, I just look at them as operations. And I look at the lot, a lot of them, I'll be very honest with you, is a bit of overreach. Yes?
Could you say more about that? Could you just give an example, please?
Of?
Example of overreach from the list of priorities.
Immediate removal of all, number one on the list, immediate removal of all remaining flood dust. Hello? Hello?
So you think that's an overreach as a goal, as a priority?
Well.
I agree, it may not be possible.
Immediate removal of all remaining flood dust. I'm good. I mean, I'll take care of my own flood dust, there's a little bit left. I don't know that it will be immediate. I don't know that I would be in favor of the city going on to everyone's property, everyone's private property, that is their responsibility in removing, immediately removing all remaining flood dust. So with my, I don't even know what that means. And last time I looked, we have a Department of Public Works, we have a city manager, they make decisions when it comes to public infrastructure. And I don't know that this is even, is this, is this a priority of the Berry City Council? Not one of mine. I mean, I think the city did a very good job at removing the flood dust that had to be removed. I'm sure if you were go to, to certain private properties, that we have zero jurisdiction over unless it's some sort of, you know, immediate health concern. We don't even have jurisdiction to go on someone's property and start removing flood dust and nor should we. So there's one example, you know, there's others. Yes, Counselor Spalding?
So I hear your point. I don't read this the same way. And I also think you have to also remember that this, it's a list of priorities and also, I'm sure, changing. As we're heading into winter, I'm not sure the immediate removal of all remaining flood dust is as important necessarily as it was, you know, two weeks after the floods, with the simple fact that there was a lot of flood dust just everywhere.
This was just in our packet.
I realize that this list of priorities was created before, this, this list of priorities was created previously, is what I'm saying.
So it's no longer accurate?
It, it may no longer be accurate, but I also, it may also be the case of it needs that priorities change when weather changes, that priorities change when, just, you know, just as we have legislative priorities or may have, may talk about legislative priorities and then something changes, our priority list may change. So I only say this but to bring to, to, to make sure, to make the point that some of these things are equity issues, even though it feels like they are out of our jurisdiction and fall under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works, for example, because there are some parts of the city that maybe we're still facing a lot of remaining flood dust, which was causing air quality and pollution problems for those people living in those neighborhoods. I wasn't necessarily seeing that in my neighborhood and I think that's part of the point of this list, is that we need to be equitable in how we're addressing all of the, all of the different parts of our community and all the different neighborhoods.
So would you have, would the council have an objection to, I mean, if the list isn't accurate, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, if it's not accurate, would the council have an objection to asking the committee for an updated list? And I'd also like to give the department heads and the manager, who are, you know, they're the ones who, they're the operating arm of the city, I'd like to give them the opportunity to weigh in on this as well because I think it affects them as well. Counselor Wazak, I'll get right to you.
Yeah. Yeah. So I just don't want us to lose the, the context of what the word priority means and the word potential in the third column here. You know, we started this conversation tonight talking about how all of our city committees, with the exception of those with statutory authority, all of our city committees are advisory. So what I see this document as saying is the JDI B Committee sitting there and saying, from where we stand with our obligation, or if you will, to view things through an equity lens slash ADA, here is what we, the JDI B Committee, advise you, the city council, to focus on. And, you know, it, it sounds crass, but if we don't want to focus on these priorities, we don't have to. But I think that the committee is completely within their right to make a suggestion to us of what they view to be the equity priorities of the city.
Counselor Stockwell?
Pretty much what he said.
Okay.
You know, there, there are priorities and I would agree with some of the priorities. There are potential remedies, but those remedies are potential. They're not like, we must do this. So when I look at ADA compliance, I think, oh, that'd be great, that would make such a difference in the city. I don't know how much we can do and what ways we can do it, but I think it'll be a great step. Climate change, yeah, we're living in that every day. So when I look at this priority, I think, yeah, that makes some sense. I would rearrange it, but it's not my list.
Counselor Deering?
Hard time looking at this list and really taking it seriously. Things like collaborating with BUUSD when preparing budgets. I mean, we have that opportunity constantly and I don't know how making that a priority is going to change how they make their budget or some of these other things like eliminating the train blare. I can't get behind or support this. And where it's not up to date and the chair is not present, I'd even be willing to table this.
I could get behind.
I'd make a motion to table that.
I could get behind to eliminate train blare. However, to do that, what a municipality has to do, these are federal regulations. So if a municipality wants to upgrade all of the intersections at their own costs, so in terms of the noise, sometimes it's a little annoying, but if a municipality wants to do that, they have to, they can create quiet zones and they have to pay to upgrade all of the intersections so they can ensure pedestrian and vehicular safety. At this juncture, in terms of, you know, we just talked about priority needs, capital needs, I don't know that I could, I could support, I don't know that I would ask the committee to work on it because it seems a little disingenuous when I know we can't afford it. So, you know, again, it's that, it's establishing that priority list. I understand what you all are saying, that, that some, if the committees want to work on something, they certainly can, but doesn't it feel a little disingenuous to you if, if there's something that the council doesn't see as a priority and they are advisory to the council? Doesn't it seem, doesn't it seem like you're being a little disingenuous if you don't make that clear from the get-go? And as, you know, I mean, management 101, you know, make sure your expectations are clear, make sure your priorities are clear as a manager. And that's essentially what we are to the, these committees, you know, their advisory in nature. And Counselor Spalding, you said it yourself, we need to give them clear, you know, clearer direction so that we're managing the committees effectively. Counselor Spalding?
So in the first part of this report, in the second paragraph, it says, "The list, creating list of priorities included identifying the affected populations, how they might be affected in the potential area of focus, ordinances, policies and/or practices." I highlight this second sentence. "The list is seen as a living and changing document to be added to or altered in any way that meets the city's goals and objectives. The list is attached and has been used to determine our plan of action for the short and long term." So please understand that I, that the committee is asking for approval, but also recognizes the advisory position that they are in.
Okay. And my, so again, what I'd like to see, because you, you said, you know, the remaining flood, you know, because of the flood dust thing, maybe, maybe not, this is not an up-to-date list. So what I would like to ask the committee for is, first of all, an up-to-date list and then I'd like to share it with the manager and department heads and allow them the opportunity because so much of this is operations, is finance. I'd like to give them the opportunity to weigh in on it before the council weighs in on it. Counselor Gussen?
If I might suggest a course of action?
Sure.
Would it be acceptable to council to move to accept the first part of this document, which is the work plan, the first two pages of the document as described, recognize that they have submitted a list of priorities and hope that they, the JDI B Community, committee, excuse me, could continue to suggest and advise council on actions that could be taken to promote equity in the community similar to the things outlined in this list? And then that can be part of future council updates as we have discussed being there. That way we would recognize the work that they have done to lay out the charge and the work plan and also sort of show that we are listening as a council to the priorities they have suggested without sign. What I hear is a concern that accepting this wholesale would sign off on these priorities as city priorities. So trying to understand that they are advisory statements on behalf of the committee. Does that make sense as a path forward? I'm sorry.
Ellen Kay?
Yeah, being the vice chair of the committee, I thought it was important that I say something here. I agree with Amanda wholeheartedly. We have no power to compel the city to do any of these things. These are advisory, these are ideas, these are aspirational. The city decides what to move on. We have never gotten a clear charge for our work. Our job is to advise on issues through an equity lens, which has been missing in most cities. It's not just us. It's in most cities. So this is a list that highlights things that we might look at through that lens. And I think focusing exclusively on this list is missing the point, that the letter lays out a charge and that's what we're asking you to consider. We haven't, we have no power, we're, we're, we have no illusion of any power. We would like to be advisory because we believe that that's what our charge is, to bring up these issues. Like who thinks about the dust from a flood affecting different people differently? We do and we'd like others to think that way. We're not compelling the city to clean up the dust right now. But we're talking about all of the things that we might start to integrate into the work of all the departments to start thinking about these things and allow us, who are thinking about them as a committee, to bring them to you in a way that gets taken seriously and doesn't get shot down. That's what this is. So I would urge the council to vote on this charge because we want to do this work we have been trying to do for four years without direction and support.
I have, have no issue with the document itself. My issue is with the list of priorities, for example, collaboration with Berry, the Union School District when preparing budgets. I mean, do I think we should collaborate as a community? They're, they're, they have their own jurisdiction. So there's nothing in statute or ordinance that requires the Union School District to collaborate with the city of Berry when they craft their budget.
Your video was going on?
I'm just struggling with so much of this. And I, like I said, I really would like to give our, it was in our packet, first time I saw it was Thursday, and I'd just like to give our department heads and manager a chance to react to it before. So the, the, you know, your charge here, the two pages that I've seen before that the chair presented to the council a number of weeks ago, I've seen that. I have, have no issue with that. It's this list of priorities. I'd simply like the committee to resubmit it and give the department heads and the manager a chance to react to it. That's all.
I think you weren't, I think you did not hear me or did not listen. It is not asking the city to act on these things. And I think that you're seizing on this in a way that is, you know, a way to sidestep, please approve this charge. These are advisory aspirational ideas, that's what they are, it's supplementary. No one is asking all the departments to act on this. We're, we don't have the power to do it. You all do. If, if that's something you want to pick up, if you say the BUUSD thing is not anything you can see a way to work with, that, that's fine. That's what we're giving you here as ideas. And to sidestep it and use it, you know, to, to once again, not vote on a charge for our committee so we can do our work is really not the desired outcome here.
Well, first of all, Ellen, I don't sidestep anything. I hit it head-on, okay? This is the document that I've seen before. This is the document that I've seen before. Have no issue approving this, this evening, and I think we, we should approve this this evening. This is your charge. This is the list of priorities. This I received on Thursday. I'd simply like the opportunity, I'd like the manager and our department heads to have the opportunity to weigh in on this. Counselor Sean Bell?
I also agree with Counselor Guston's suggestion. One thing I think we have to think about with these priorities is that the world is changing really quickly, and everything in our city has changed really quickly. And so what's happened in the past two years is there's a lot of, I'll say, yeah, inequity that's become extraordinarily clear, and that's on the tails of the pandemic and this and that and the other thing. So, and admittedly, our city is not one of the most wealthy cities in the state. But we do have a lot of problems that are surfacing and broiling under the surface. And one of the things that I think is good about the list is it brings it to the fore. It calls some questions. It's, but as Ellen said, it's not a demand. This is aspirational. That's food for thought. And the only way you make change, really, is to let it get on the table. Not saying we approve it, but it gives us things to think about for the future.
Counselor Spalding?
The first thing is that this list was actually included when the chair presented to the committee on October 8th. It's in your packet for that. So it's not the first time that we have seen it. It was presented as part of that packet.
This list?
Yes. I'm looking at the packet on my iPad right now, and it's the same exact list. So we have seen the list before. Whether we paid any attention to it, I don't know, but it was included. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the report from the Berry City Justice Equity Diversity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, their work plan as presented, and let them go forth and educate people and review municipal ordinances.
Second.
Moved in second, Amy Galford?
Yeah, I guess when I look at that page of priorities, I think I'm struggling a bit with the language and what things are, are being called. And that may be because the potential charge of the committee is so broad, which is what they're struggling with. And I remember when this committee was being created, I was concerned, and I think I made a public comment, that you run the risk when there is a separate equity and inclusion committee in an organization that they're on the side versus really the way that equity and inclusion gets done, is it's done in the daily work of the city staff, the city council committees, you know, our everyday interactions. And so that's, you know, so it creates kind of, one of them is a, is an overlaying kind of approach and the others within specific tasks. So, you know, just a couple of comments, like, for me, priorities, like, this is a lot, and priorities should really be pretty narrow in order to be strategic and be able to get it done on a time cycle. So I think if this is, you know, there's no date bound on this list of priorities. I would look at it more as a strategic plan where it's like, what are your priorities? And maybe it does say for the next year, maybe it is for 2025. So maybe that's inherent in this. But I think a smaller number. The column that's called condition, I would actually see it as topics. Those are like topics they're wanting to address. What's called effect there is, I think, the judgment they're making about condition on some of these. I mean, some of them seem obvious, like it's a negative thing, like noise is generally a negative thing. But, and then remedies, some of those are getting quite specific, like their recommendation of a particular thing to do, which sounds to me like they've, maybe they've already done the work on doing the research on it to come up with that remedy versus is it still the role of the committee to work with city staff, to work with other committees, to do the research and to come up with that, brainstorm that list of potential remedies? Seeing potential remedy on a list of priorities kind of seems like a mismatch to me because that's sort of like the end result would be getting to a list of potential remedies versus priorities and topics you'd be addressing would still be kind of more of a vague outline. So I think, looking at this, it strikes me as some parts of it are very vague in general and some parts are extremely specific. And that's, that's kind of an odd mix. So it seems to me like more of this should be like, these are topics on which they see a need to provide some kind of advice or input, but it's not clear to me, like, are those coming from public comments to the committee? Are they coming from city staff to the committee? Are they coming from city council to the committee? Like, where are those topics coming from? Is it their own work, brainstorming and doing their research? And maybe that needs to be part of their charge, is like, where should they be getting their priorities from? Because it could be all of those things, and there's not a right or wrong answer on that. But I think that's part of the issue, is there's a whole lot, bunch of different ways to come up with those list of topics. There's an infinite number of topics that could be on this page. And so like, how does this turn into something that's really functional at scale of things that are meaningful, you know, on a city scale? Like, I see something like climate change, disaster preparedness, like, too big, too vague. Are there specific things? Yeah, there's already like, we have a hazard mitigation plan. Did that have enough public input? To me, that's what this committee should be doing, is it should be looking at, you know, are people participating in public processes? Who attends city council? It's the same, like, few ones, right? Like, we all recognize each other's names, like, get more people involved in public process, get more people involved in committees, get more people involved in all of this, you know, rather than, I'm seeing the remedies here, and I'm not real familiar with what the committee's been doing. So there's probably a lot of work behind how they've generated this list. But to me, it seems like the role of the committee would be that advising the other committees and city council and city staff and having that feedback. I'm having a little trouble with this table in terms of how that fits with that. And these look to me more like examples and a really long list of topics rather than necessarily priorities.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Did you have your hand up or no?
Oh, actually.
I can speak after I'm in.
I was effectively gonna make the motion that Counselor Spalding made, that's why my hand was up previously. And I would just reiterate my previous point, which is that I think the work plan is, is good. It describes a good charge for the committee. I see the list of priorities as a moment in time, a series of recommendations for the city that we are listening to. And I would look forward to the committee updating that list in future presentations to council as other ideas where they can see equity being brought to city practices. And as has been previously shared here, potentially working with the manager to address maybe some specific things with city staff as they see, as they see things coming up.
Thank you. Anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I would just, just, you know, I, I do think that there are areas here that get really close to the, the job descriptions of people who work for the, for the city. I think one of our, you know, one of the challenges when we get into the weeds of the operational stuff is that city staff, you know, we have to consider many factors, right, in, in, when we make decisions. And so just a very, you know, like, the light pollution, for example, right? So when we talk about light pollution, there may be an equity concern about killing trees or sleep patterns, but as we heard last week, there's also concerns, public safety concerns about parking lots being dark and streets being dark and people wanting to get home safely, particularly because there's been an uptick in quality of life issues, right? So what one committee may view as an equity issue of affect, too much light affecting sleep patterns or killing trees, you know, when we make a decision at the staff level, we're probably thinking of expanding lights at this point, right? Because right now, the concern that we're hearing from residents is, is public safety related, right? So noise pollution is another one, right? So, and again, just, just example of what's written here, right? Eliminating the train blare, not even sure that's legal, but my goodness, that could be a real safety concern, right? Especially on, on, thinking of Hill Street where there's now a fence where you might not see the train coming, certainly if you can't hear it, might be more of a risk, right? So I, I just want to be, you know, give examples of why, when we get into these operational type things, there is maybe a conflict, right? Because the biggest example of when, you know, governments have to balance equity versus other values like safety, you know, after 9/11, right? Everyone had to readjust to new screening techniques at airports, right? And so governments have to make those kinds of decisions on a daily basis. And we can't, and I know it's going to be difficult, maybe unpopular, we can't always take just equity into account, right? So if there's an equity component about lighting, we also have to look at the public safety concern, which is why I think there may be some frustration about when the city doesn't do certain things, is because we, we have to look at a balance of, of values, right? So I'd, I'd be happy to talk to the committee about these priorities because there are, you know, these are things that, you know, it's not like we don't think about these things on a daily basis. What happens is we have to make other, we, we have other competing things that we consider and just, just gave those two brief examples, right? Public safety being a balance with light pollution. You know, the recreation issue, I think we've done a good job of trying to make spaces accessible and, and investing, but, you know, hiring a recreational department staff is, is really more of a budget decision than, than an equity decision to me, right? And so just making that point, that these, when these things get into the weeds and to, into the operations, that's where those challenges and conflicts exist, not because we're necessarily against what one committee's looking at, but because, you know, we have to look at a, a series of values when we make these types of calls.
I just wanted to ask the city manager if in any way he feels consoled by the second sentence in the second paragraph. "This list is seen as a living and changing document to be added to or altered in any way that meets the city's goals and objectives." So that, so it doesn't seem like the intent is to make something that conflicts. It seems to be something that would work with.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. Look, I, I think that, that's, that's a fine, that's fine language. I, what I worry about with something like this, right? And I think we've heard it from some members of the committee, I've heard it in some of their meetings, some members of the committee feel unsupported or by the city or the council, right? And so if they've approved a list of priorities and then the city doesn't, and the city moves in the opposite direction of their, of their priority on light pollution, that's not the city not supporting them.
Right.
That's the city having to balance public safety versus equity, right? And so I get it that, you know, the, the committee can't sort of force us to turn off lights, but I, I worry that, you know, I, I hear the frustration from members of the committee when I watch their videos, right, that the city doesn't support us, the council doesn't support us. And it's not because, certainly, I can speak in just for myself, don't, it's not that we don't value equity, it's that when we look at many of these issues, we have to look at several different values related to it, right? Yes, equity, but also public safety, also regulations, legal.
Yeah, federal law, state law.
Budget, right? There's a web of things, right? And so I don't think, you know, I, I think that's more of the risk that the committee, it sort of becomes a, a cycle that the committee feels less supported because we may not be, they've adopted something that I may ask Brian to do the opposite of next week, right? And, and that's, so that's maybe the only, the consequence there. But I just wanted to highlight that, you know, we, we don't, you know, the, the reason that it's better for these things to stay on a higher level is because when you do get into the weeds of the operation, like, how much lights we have, it's not a matter of just looking at the equity component, it's, it's many other pieces, so.
So the motion, as I understand it, is to approve the work plan document, the first two pages of what was submitted, and acknowledge receipt of the second chart. Is that correct, Counselor Spalding? Is that the spirit of your?
I am fine with accepting the work plan as presented. I think that was my motion, for the simple fact that it has the sentence that says, "This list is seen as a living and changing document to be added to or altered in any way that meets the city's goals and objectives." I don't think that the committee in any way was expecting that the council, by approving this list, means that those are now our priorities. I think they're simply saying that this is a living and changing document and the city's goals, that they can be changed in any way to meet the city's goals and objectives. And it's very simple.
So why in the world would you approve a priorities list that is not your priorities? Unless, of course, you just want someone to come back later on and say, well, you approved this, and now you won't do anything about it. See, we're not appreciative. I mean, eliminating train blare is not going to make my top 50 because I understand what we have to do to eliminate train blare. We have to redesign and pay for railroad crossings at a cost of about a half million dollars per crossing. You know, disaster emergency preparedness is not going to make my top 50 at this time because by state statute, we have to approve annually a disaster preparedness plan. And we do that as a council. So why in the world would I ask, why would I ask this committee to work on something that the city staff submits and works on, on an annual basis? So I, you know, again, I don't understand, I have no issue with this document. And I've said three or four times, I mean, the first in the meeting, Counselor, you said, well, this may not be an up-to-date plan. So I said, well, okay, could we get one? I mean, there's no reason why we can't separate these two documents, work on the priority plan, so they are shared priorities. And that way, you don't have conflict later on. Yes, Counselor Spalding?
I think that if you recall what the vice chair, Ellen Kay, said during her comment, was that this, the list of priorities is aspirational. The work plan, as identified in this report, is to, the committee wants to divide its responsibilities into two categories with a working group for each, community education and municipal ordinance reform. Those are spelled out below in the plan. The document, we, we're stuck on this list of priorities, and really what the committee wants to do is continue to educate the community and review municipal ordinances. That's what they really want to do. They've provided this list of priorities, in my opinion, for the council to take it or leave it. And what I'm suggesting is we can take it or leave it. We can make them our priorities or not make them our priorities. But if we want to approve this work plan, which is to let the committee go out and continue community education and continue, or to start municipal ordinance review, then, then we need to approve this.
So I would appreciate it if somebody would split this into two motions, so we can take this and I can vote yes, and then we can take this and I can vote no. Otherwise, I'm going to have to vote no.
Okay. Counselor Spalding, would you accept a friendly amendment to make your motion that we approve the work plan and we acknowledge receipt of the committee's stated list of priorities and look forward to them making future advisory documents for the council in the future?
Yes, I would make, I would be happy to make that friendly amendment.
Close enough. Nice compromise.
Ellen Kay has her hand raised.
Ellen Kay?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna remind everybody that it says potential remedy, but it sounds like you got to a place where, that, that is workable at this point. And I'm, I'm trying to think if there was something else to, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna leave it there.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, sorry, we'll have to vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye. And all of those in, those in favor of the original motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. It was a good compromise. One thing that was not, counsel, you did get in your packet, was, Emily, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I don't expect you to say anything, but one of the casualties was the resignation of Emily Wheeler Reynolds. Emily and I often find ourselves on opposite sides of political issues, but I've always found Emily to be kind, she's always considerate. And, you know, it's these types of casualties that just drive me berserk. Emily, I don't know what happened. I suspect from our brief email exchange, I do look forward to talking to you at some point. But I, you know, I'm looking at some of the reactions on social media, whether it's Christmas for kids or whether it's, you know, this letter going out. And, you know, it's just gotta stop. You know, Christmas for kids, I'm just going out and doing the work. That's what I'm doing this week. I'm raising a ton of money for kids. And as far as who receives the gifts, I leave that to the folks at the school. I leave that to Officer Flurry because they're the ones who are closest enough to the situation. If I get involved in that, I'll just screw it up. So I do what I do best. I provide resources to the program. And it's just awful, the way we're treating each other. You know, Emily and I probably disagree on a lot of things, but I'd never treat her disrespectfully, you know, regardless of how you feel about people. It's just not, you know, none of this is necessary. We can, we can make our points without being nasty about it. Ellen, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I understood at the beginning of the meeting you to say that we were not going to be discussing these things at the meeting. these things at the meeting, but you've just brought them up. Do you intend to let other people speak to, to what you just brought up? Because you have actually opened that conversation.
Thanks, Ellen. You're out of order. Yeah, thanks.
I'm not out of order.
I just said you are.
I'm the citizen of this town. And I'm on this committee. And we have all suffered bullying on this committee.
Counsel, we'll move on to item nine, which is.
We have all suffered bullying on this committee.
Peter, please. We'll move on to item nine, which is upcoming business.
I think if the topic is open, then people must be allowed to comment. If the topic is closed.
Want to comment about this? She didn't want to comment, but she wanted to comment about me and just start in again.
You opened a discussion that you said you weren't going to open, and now it's open. And I think other people get to speak to it besides one person.
Then go ahead and speak to it. You're going to anyway.
That's right. Everyone on this committee, with the exception of maybe one or two people, have been bullied, have suffered harassment, have gotten things in the mail from even across the country, have been targeted in many, many ways for trying to do the work of equity and inclusion and belonging, which we deeply believe in. When someone resigns from the committee, we should look to that reason. Because that, what, that is what happens to all of us on this committee. And so, yes, we are looking for more support from the city council. And what just happened here with picking at this one part of our charge is, is a prime example of how this happens over and over and over again in four years. Four years. And when we're talking about Christmas, I am a Jewish person. I grew up in a town where there were very few Jews, where another religion was foisted upon everyone as if it were universal. It made us feel excluded, isolated, and sidelined. So we are talking about how to make our community more inclusive so that everyone feels that they belong. It's a valid conversation, just like the things on that chart are valid conversations. And I, I would love it if we were discussing equity and trying to figure that out in balance with all of the things that Nicholas was talking about. That's not what's been happening. That's why we have this committee. Because we are trying to bring that in as a factor in our conversations about everything we do. Because like Amy Galford so aptly said, equity and belonging should be spread out through the, all of the workings of our city and our society. It has not been. That's why we exist. So that when we talk about making celebrations more inclusive of the many, many cultures who do not celebrate this particular holiday, that's what we're talking about. And if you're in the dominant group of people for whom this is your holiday, you may not understand what it's like to not be part of that and not belong. And so we're bringing that voice in. And that is plain and simple, all that is happening here. Thank you.
Eric Aril.
Sorry, I can't make my, my camera work, but I just want to say, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I can't make my camera work, but I just want to say that, you know, I'm, you know, Christmas for kids, great. I'm also in the minority. My partner and I are atheists. We had a son that was autistic. We had two armed cops show up at our door, giving us gifts. We had no idea why we were on this list for Christmas is for kids. We were very open with our son, again, who was autistic, that there was no Santa, there was no God. And some teachers apparently put him on a list for needy kids. My son was not in want of gifts. We're, we're very, you know, just, we're, we're stunned that teachers put him on a list for needy kids. But the fact that, that other, other cultures, other belief systems are out there, we are inundated with celebrations of other cultures. You know, we, we celebrate the, all, all the cultures. But the fact that, you know, there are other holidays. And I just want to put out there that I work for, for nonprofits. And we, we don't, you know, we, we don't have the right to celebrate, you know, Christmas and, and all the, the secular holidays because they are just not, they're not in our, our guidelines, you know, for grants. We have to celebrate all the holidays. So the fact that, you know, Christmas is for kids, you know, great, you know, that's awesome. But, you know, not everybody celebrates Christmas as a secular holiday. You know, you have to be open to all the holidays. Thank you.
Raylene Munier.
I just have one question. My question is, and maybe only Tracy can answer this, I don't know, but I want to know, has anybody from any other religions or beliefs ever come forward and asked the partnership or the city to celebrate something and had the city say no, or the partnership say no, and not have a discussion about adding it?
I'm, I'm not aware of any instance, but you'd have to ask, Tracy would have to speak for the partnership. Rachel Van, I'm sorry, your name isn't showing up on the host.
Rachel Van Lee.
Van Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, my interpretation of what I saw on social media and the information and the work the JIDB team is doing, I guess I saw it differently. I obviously celebrate Christmas, as you can see here, starting a little early. My mom's a minister. I grew up in the church. And I'm just excited and saw it as an opening to see other things other than just Christmas be celebrated. And so my sense was I didn't think anything was being taken away about Christmas. So my hope is that we can just learn about other, other religions. And like Raylene mentioned, I'm not sure if there have been things that have already been brought to the Berry Partnership that haven't been put up. But I sure look forward to seeing some more inclusive, inclusive work that also doesn't take away Christmas. Thanks.
Thank you. Rosemary Avril.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's unfortunate there's yet another conflict in our community, a division frankly, of how different parties feel. I guess my, my one point, and I did send a letter to the council, and it will appear in The Times Argus tomorrow with my feeling, and I probably feel as strongly and differently than the Ward One constituent. But I'm just wondering why the JIDB went to the partnership. I am not aware of any religious themes or anything that the partnership displays or includes in their posts on Facebook. I, I don't know. So I'm just curious why they felt that was important. And that, and then I'll just, I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Thanks very much.
I'm not going to speak for anyone, Rosemary. What I'd invite you to do is attend the next meeting of the Diversity and Equity Committee, and maybe you could ask the committee yourself.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Booton.
If folks want to attend that meeting, they have to go in person to the police station. Oh, that's changed?
Can it be hybrid?
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I informed the, the committee, yeah.
So it will be a hybrid meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, yes. Oh, Councilor Spalding.
So I appreciate all the comments. I, the one thing that I would like to make sure that we're careful of, when I asked the question of Mr. Booton when he was here earlier a couple of weeks ago about why was it called Christmas for kids, it was my impression that this organization was a city-sponsored organization. And there are a lot of people on the council who were participating. We do a coin drop. There are city officers who are delivering, shopping and delivering presents. It seems very much like a city-organized event. That is not the case. But I think it is important to understand that that is the impression that people have. That's the impression I had. So I think we have to just be careful and recognize that when we are promoting something called Christmas for kids and it's not actually a city or sanctioned event or organization, it's actually a private nonprofit, yes, please, go ahead and do what you want to do. That's your, your right to do that. I, I just want to be clear for me, I, it wasn't, I didn't understand that. And I think we have to recognize that there is a separation of church and state and that municipal dollars should not be going towards one particular religion, one particular ethnic group. They should be supporting everybody. So I just bring that to your attention.
Do you, do you want me to provide information? No?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I can't.
I, I got some information from Nicholas. Thank you.
Counselor.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to remind us all that we need to slow down a little bit and stop forming opinions as fast as we possibly can at times and really educate ourselves.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item nine, which is upcoming business. Counsel, at our next meeting, we need to.
We have two more things.
Two more things.
Oh, damn it. Update on elevation funding priorities.
Thank you. And I just put something up on the screen, which I can be quick with this. A sec to. Can't see it. For some reason, I can't. Okay. So Counsel, I just, this, this can be pretty quick. I just, it's been a couple of weeks since we've talked about this topic, and I had promised to come back to you a little bit sooner with some updates. But we did, I, I want to let you know where we were. We have Janet and I met with the state of VEM, put together very, very helpful briefing for all the communities that are eligible for this funding. And so that's, that caused us to hit pause a little bit, not, not in a negative way, just because we got more information about the, the program itself. But just as a, as a full-blown update, we had initially 13 intakes of, from property owners that were interested in elevations. After a review of the intakes and after closely following the, the rules from VEM for the funding, one property was eliminated because this is only for residential funding. And then one property, and this, this one could be added back on based on initial council feedback at the first meeting that we discussed, is one of the properties, as you know. I've, I've tried not, I've tried to keep these properties sort of anonymous to, to let us sort of work with, with concepts rather than individual property owners. But one of them you knew was the Good Samaritan Haven Shelter. I got some feedback from that council discussion that they would not be a top priority. So we only ranked 11, right? So that, that's, that's up to you as the council, if you wish to, you know, consider Good Sam in a, in a different way, they can certainly come back on. But one of the properties is commercial and definitely not eligible for this funding. So Janet and I, we, we looked at all the map of the, of the properties that submitted intakes. We sought some feedback from the very, very helpful River Program scientists who've been working with us on many other mitigation projects about where sort of we were landing in terms of priorities. And they, they were very supportive of sort of what our approach had been, and which you can see here, which we sort of identified four tiers. And the top three would be in the Berlin Vine Street area. And these would be basically properties that are, would become sort of the first line of defense in that new floodplain area, right? As you recall, we have a bunch of buyouts approved right along Vine and Scampini. And so these properties, one of the reasons Janet and I sort of looked at them and they stood out was because they may, they, they would be sort of that first line now. And so elevating them seemed to us to make sense when we shared that thinking with the River Scientists. They also seemed to believe that, that, that was a logical thing to do. We then went through the, you know, we've ranked the others and you can see on the tier definition why they may be a step below, a tier below the one above them. So we have a couple of, one property on River Street, one property on First Street that could be redevelopment sites, but they would sort of be low-priority redevelopment sites. So they could be good candidates for elevation because they don't have a lot of promise as a, as anything else, basically. And then tier three, we, you know, the, these are properties that have real high potential as redevelopment sites. There's three on North Main Street. And there's one on Second Street that's actually part of a cluster as well. So those are on tier three. They're not, they're not on tier two or tier one because we, from our perspective, they, they have potential as something else. And then tier four, the ones are, have eligibility concerns. One is a Brooklyn Street, one which is in the floodway, which we learned from VEM is not going to be really going to be competitive for funding for this program. And the other one, Seminary Street, which, you know, is Good Sam. So there was one, I, I should have mentioned upfront, there was one other property that we, we removed from consideration because they were also approved for a buyout while we were going through this exercise. So in our minds, in our, in our thinking, you know, these are property owners looking for a way out. One of them has a way out that's moving forward, which is the buyout. So we thought they should, in our, in our estimation, they should, you know, come out of this, this intake list because that gives somebody else who doesn't have an option for a buyout, an opportunity to, to be ranked. So that's where we are. The, basically, the next step is we, we would have to submit, and this is just a, a map representation without identifying specific addresses, but just to give you a visual snapshot of, of the areas we're looking at. And it's the, the three stars along Berlin Street, Vine Street area that we would be prioritizing at this point. And what we, there's a couple of, of possible next steps. And there's a couple of possible next steps. We can, you know, what we could do is if you're comfortable with the tiers we've kind of developed, we could submit those to A and R because that is the next step in the process. The state is going to require the A and R look at our submissions to, because they can look at it with the River Science point of view. And then we can proceed with those. We can give you more information. We can answer questions. We can, whatever you'd like. If, you know, we could certainly end up in a place where if you feel comfortable with the approach we've taken, we can take that next step with the state. But it's, or you can do nothing. There's all those things around the table tonight. But we just wanted, it's been a while, so we wanted to make sure you knew where we were, the work that's been happening on it. It's really, it's a high priority for us because we know that these are people who are looking to have some finality to their housing situations and happy to take whatever direction you all are comfortable with.
Counselor Wazza-Zak.
Thank you. First, on the Brooklyn Street property in the floodway, can you just explain a little bit more about what that requirement slash rule slash why A and R might not like that one?
They do not like properties in the floodway, period. So I think they frown upon improvements, development in the floodway overall. So they're, that was the information shared with us at the briefing, that they're likely to be less favorable on those types of properties. So the other properties, you know, there's a combination with the other properties, some of them have, part of their, part of their lot is on the floodway, some of them have just a corner of their property on the floodway. So we think that those will be more palatable. But the one on Brooklyn Street is wholly contained within the floodway.
I can see.
Yeah.
I can see both sides of that argument.
Yeah.
And then more operationally, with the way these tiers are and with the way the submissions to A and R work, let's just say, for example, that all of the tier one properties are each going to cost $300,000 apiece. But let's say in the same example that both of tier twos will only cost $150,000 apiece. So will, who will decide? Is it basically just like, we're going to start at tier one and fund as many of them as we can regardless of how much it costs? Or are we going to be presented different options for which might...
I see where you're going. So in other words, you say, okay, we can do three housing units for 900 or we can do five housing units. If we mix it up a little bit, we can do five housing units and actually help more housing units for 900,000. I had the same question.
Yeah. So it's really, it's up to the council collectively. You know, I think that we, this came up in the briefing because we asked about partial funding, right? So there's, we were thinking in the sense that, you know, what if we do the top three and there's 50,000 left? Can we award 50,000 to the next one even though that's not enough to fully elevate it? So long story short, yes, we can do that. We could also not fully fund them, right? So we could say, we'll fully, we'll fund them at 75%.
But that's, just not to cut you off, though. But that's our, like, A and R is just giving a green light as to whether we can do it.
The property, correct.
And then we are going to decide how the money actually gets vetoed.
Correct. Absolutely, yes. So the council could decide to do 75% of every project and you could then extend it further. Now, the trick there is, and because we did ask this as well, what happens if the homeowner doesn't follow through? We're on the hook for that. So there's a liability risk to the city, right? It's sort of like, in that sense, it's like a FEMA-type grant, right? Where if they, if the, you know, we say, you know, let's say we can reach down to the First Street property, that homeowner is interested, signs on, and they end up not putting in their 25% or whatever the case is, then it's the city's risk liability that that project didn't get done. So that is a calculated risk that we would have to take. But it is possible and it is wholly the city and, you know, the municipality's discretion of how the funding is awarded. Most, you know, most communities don't have this problem because they only have a handful. We're, I think we're unique in the amount of applicants that we had for this.
So, or, sorry, I don't, but just to finish my train of thought on this is, my two cents would be to just submit the whole list to A and R because if there's ones that are going to get vetoed one way or the other, I'd rather know that now than us deciding. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah. I think we can do that. We'll, that may be a good option that we just, we can have the prioritization list, but submit all of it. That way we can move down it. I think what would be helpful for us, and we can certainly come back to you as the council once we have this, we can see if any of them are knocked off based on A and R's review. So, and if people want to juggle the tiers or whatever, that's fine as well. So maybe that's a good, that could be a good next step.
Mr. Stockwell?
So if they do reneg, if someone says, yes, they want it, they're going to get the 25% match, they don't, can we take that hunk of money and move it on?
It depends on if it's been spent. So it depends on, you know...
So we give them that money on the understanding that they're going to get the 25% match. They don't get it, we lose that money.
It, so it depends if we've spent it, yes, and that's where the risk is. Let's say, for example, we've hired an engineer to do the phase one or we've done the elevation certificates, whatever the case may be. We've gotten some far, you know, some length along the process. That's reneged. That money would be clawed back. And if the city's already spent it, then it becomes obviously a loss somewhere else. There are ways around that. Obviously, we can write really tight contracts and we cannot spend, you know, we can wait until the money's raised. So there are ways to mitigate the risk, but it doesn't, you know, you can never fully eliminate it, but there are ways to make it much lower.
And do we have any ballpark figures on what we think it might cost for elevation?
It's quite a range. You know, when we were advocating for this money, we were working really closely with Montpelier and the municipalities had, you know, an estimate of 150, $200,000 per elevation. So the 300,000 is actually quite a high, high range for the award. These are, you know, we can grant no more than 300,000. I'd be shocked, really, if we landed at that range with most of the properties that we're looking at. Most of them pretty small, I mean, with the exception, maybe a Good Sam, which is a pretty big, good-sized building. Most of the other ones are residential and fairly small footprints. So I would imagine, when we were advocating, we were in the 150 to 200 range. So we'd expect to be in that general ballpark. So if that were the case, we would expect to be able to move into the tier twos, certainly.
I agree with Counselor Wazza-Zak that go ahead and see what happens with A and C and then we take it from there.
So, I mean, we would, the thought of, I mean, this is going to be very competitive. Some people are going to get left out. The thought of the city not ensuring that if an awardee did not raise their, in other words, an awardee renegs, they're supposed to have a 25, I want to make sure we have an ironclad...
Absolutely, yeah.
...contract in terms of, we need the money, we need a escrow before we spend a dime.
Yeah.
Because these funds are going to be so competitive, it would be a shame to see, you know...
Any of it.
And I'm not saying someone would purposely be disingenuous, but it would be a shame to see someone else go without because someone wasn't quite forthright through the whole process. Or, you know, thought they could easily get funding and then it turns out they can't and someone else loses and, you know, all of that is for naught. So I just want to make sure that through, when we get to that point, we've really thought through how we make the homeowner match, if there is one. Not all homeowners will get a match, but if there is one, how we make it absolutely ironclad.
Yeah. And there's a lot of factors that go into it, right? So if you're thinking of a $150,000 elevation, a 25% match is pretty significant for most people. And so that may be out of reach for, it may make, if that's what the rule is, it may make the program unattainable for many. It may have to be a lower match, right? If you're, at 10%, you're already talking about 15,000, which is still, you know, a big chunk of change for people. So, and then you get into the, a whole series of things that if you, you know, you force some people to do the match, but then you run, you exhaust your list and nobody else can afford a match, but somebody's already paid it, do you have to go back and fully fund them? I mean, there's a whole series of things that could, permutations that could happen. But, yeah, I'm happy to, I think, sending it to A and R and then we can certainly revisit the tiers and we can get a better sense of how we might structure. If the council is interested in a match, we can come up with a proposal on that as well. But I...
My thought is, I mean, I want to see us do as many homes as we can. I realize that you want to make the program available, you know, we have a cross-section in the city. We have a cross-section of incomes. So it would seem appropriate that some folks might be fortunate enough to have no match and some folks might have a match. My main interest is doing as many homes as we can. These are not homes that are eligible for buyout, likely homes that might flood again in the future. So I think the more homes we can do for the 900,000, understanding that, again, I would like to look at the cross-section of the community and say, there might be one or two where there's no match because they can't afford it. So I want to see them held harmless, but I want to do as many homes as we can.
Perfect.
Good? Do you need anything else?
I don't need anything else. No, we'll take it to A and R and then we'll come back to you with an update. Thank you.
Counsel, word. Item 8F on the agenda. This is the flood mitigation plan update.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much, Mayor. Again, apologies for making this an agenda adjustment. The manager, we'll get the system going forward. But part of the flood resiliency plan was that we had committed to making an update on the plan, on pieces of the plan at every single council meeting. So this is the first of many going forward. And this updates sections 1.4 and 1.5. That is in the beginning part. 1.4, citizen-led neighborhood flood knowledge, which seeks to gain input and knowledge from people who experience flooding firsthand about exactly what went on in their neighborhoods. And then 1.5 is resident education around leading workshops and informational gatherings about small flood mitigation improvements to their own properties. In the resiliency plan as passed only two weeks ago, we had noted that we had applied for funding, thanks to the city's new special projects coordinator, to the Vermont Council on Rural Development's Climate Catalyst Fund, which is a fund that makes relatively small-dollar but impactful grants specifically around mitigating impacts of climate in Vermont communities. And there's a huge variety of things it can be used for. The city applied for funding to satisfy both of those goals and received funding. What that will actually look like is five different neighborhood walks. The funding will provide hot beverages and snacks as well as outreach flyers to houses in those neighborhoods for everyone in those neighborhoods to meet at a certain point in the street and then all walk together slowly down the street, pointing to how the water flowed, which storm drains just didn't quite work, which houses got hit harder because of the way that very, very hyperlocal-specific street may have moved. And the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission has signed on as a partner to that grant to collect the information that we gather on that neighborhood level and find a way to get it interfaced with GIS systems so that it can be logged for future knowledge, for example, in the inundation modeling that we just requested. That kind of data can be shared on with them. The second part of that is, as I said, the resident education. The grant provides for four workshops held at the Aldrich Library. Obviously, no dates or times yet, but looking to start all of this in February and March. The workshops are focused on personal property mitigation measures. If you got a little bit of water into your basement or if you know that water just comes onto your property in deeply unhelpful ways, these are workshops for you. They are going to be focused on things like building a rain barrel, planting a rain garden, looking at the overall lay of your property, the way it slopes either towards or against your foundation, and then some information about, okay, when you're making these kinds of adjustments to your property, what permits do you need to pull and how do you make sure you're in compliance? Because one of the things that we really need to be careful about doing is making sure that we are in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, or that will be a problem for the city. So the funding will also provide for 25 people from each of the rain garden and rain barrel workshops to get gift cards to local businesses to buy some of the supplies with which to implement the things they're learning in the workshop. So keep your eyes peeled for those things forward. As I said, probably February, March. We'll talk more about implementation in future council meetings, but I wanted to make sure that people knew that we were moving ahead.
Thank you. Questions?
Counselor Deering.
Counselor Deering.
I just want to make sure we get good advance notice about the walkthroughs, the five neighborhood walks that are going on. I'd really like to make sure I'm part of that.
Yep, absolutely. We're, as I said, we're looking to schedule them out in February and March. And my goal is at their minimum six to eight weeks of heads up on that. And the grant also provides for, truly, we're going to like door by door in those neighborhoods, put flyers on doors so that people in the neighborhood don't have to pay attention to council or anything like that. They will know something is coming to their neighborhood.
And you'll have alternate dates?
Yeah, for weather.
We get a lot of snow in February and March. And it's, honestly, it's not so much the snow. We can deal with that. It's when the snow accumulates and you've got snow banks, you can't move people through neighborhoods.
Yes.
Oh, good, cool.
For sure.
Counselor Shon Bell?
Just want to thank you for the update and the ongoing work and thoroughness that you're providing. So thank you.
Counselor Stockwell?
I think this will be really exciting for people. This is a great idea.
Unless it's 20 below, then it won't be so exciting, but it's still a good idea.
Vermont, I believe I mentioned hot beverages.
Yeah.
Part of the grant funding.
There you go. Counsel, any other questions of Counsel Augustine? No? Then we'll move on to upcoming business. We've got, next week, we will be finalizing our legislative priority list and that's pretty much, pretty much where the focus needs to be, followed by, well, sort of a soft dive into the budget and how that's looking. And no, no matter how you look at it, it's not really looking any better. You can turn it any way you want. It's going to be, it's going to be a hard discussion. Anything else, Counsel?
Mayor, I would...
Yes?
I would ask that as part of the budget discussion, council also have conversations about bringing that budget discussion out to residents of Berry. I don't know exactly what that would look like, but I would love for us to think of some interesting ways to make sure that people understand the moving parts of the budget conversation and have a chance to reflect their own priorities.
Well, we did that, we actually have done that before and we asked people to sort of, you know, what is most important to you? In other words, is it a fully-staffed police department? Is it a fully-staffed fire department? Is it a fully-staffed, you know, interestingly, and I think it's a really good discussion to have because almost universally, people indicate that, well, everything's important to me. It's like, okay, but we can't have it, you know? And they do get a flavor for what the council goes through because we understand, everything's important to us too, but you have to make difficult choices. And I think those are conversations you can have with, you know, a lot of the different polling software. Those are conversations that you can have almost in real time with people and say, okay, well, we've narrowed it down to this. So, you know, we've done a little bit of the hard work and we've identified some potential reductions or some places where we may not spend as much. What do you think of these? And we can let people react in real time. So I think that's always a great idea. Roundtable, Counselor Stockwell.
I was pleased to be part of an art committee for the Ward Five Apartments and I can't say anything much about it yet, except that I am really excited that there is going to be some terrific art in Ward Three of all places. So that seems really exciting and I think it should be unveiled by January.
Nice. Counselor Sweldon?
I got to attend my favorite event of the entire year this past weekend. It's called Worst Song Ever. And if you haven't been, it is so much fun. And every year, they raise money and give it to an organization. And this year, the organization was the Berry City River Access Task Force. And so they were there and they got to talk to people about what they're doing. They got to, you know, obviously hear the worst song ever and then they get half of the proceeds. And if you haven't been, the way that they get money is each song gets a bucket and you vote with money. And so whoever gets the most money is the worst song. They win the title of being the worst song. And it's a lot of fun. So I thought it was, I mean, it's a fabulous event. It started at Espresso Bueno. It's outgrown, it outgrew that venue and is now at the Canadian Club. But I love that it gives back to different organizations in the community and the task force is a great, a great part of our community. So I just wanted to make sure I let everybody know that.
Counselor Wazza-Zak.
Yes.
Counselor Shon Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Augustine?
Happy Thanksgiving to those who celebrate. I hope if you're traveling, it's a safe one and I hope that however you choose to spend it, if you do celebrate, you spend it with people you love.
Thank you. Counsel Deering?
I'll echo that sentiment as well. Happy holidays to those that do celebrate. If you don't celebrate, let somebody know what you do celebrate so we can shine that bright as well in our community. Speaking of shining bright, anybody who's looking to help out, we're going to be hanging Christmas lights, or I'm sorry, holiday lights Friday morning. And we'll have our Mary Berry Holiday Festivals this weekend with the tree lighting and some amazing community festivities Saturday evening. I know I always really look forward to those, just getting together with our community, just celebrating all of our diversity together as one. So I'll look forward to that with lots of smiles on people's faces.
Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
That reminded me of something that is just a cool, fun fact in that the state tree lighting will be on December 5th and the tree came from downtown Berry, right in front of the American Legion, I believe.
Oh, why'd they cut that down?
Yes, yeah. So that's going over to Montpelier to be the official state tree. So that reminded me of that.
That's amazing.
Can I add a bonus history fact?
Can I do what?
Can I add a bonus history fact? The first, the first ever official White House Christmas tree came from Vermont, too.
Oh, that's cool.
Look at the brain on you. Start out with something boring but important. Man, I spent Friday morning touring the North End and, well, actually, much of the city because we were in flood-affected areas with members of FEMA and the administration. So we appreciate their time, appreciate the time to, you know, as FEMA sort of winds things down to, you know, just offer them our observations. And the really biggie for us was, you know, when things, when properties go through a FEMA buyout, can you please provide a mechanism for us to build that, build on them at, on a future date? So I think they certainly heard that message loud and clear. And likewise, Counsel Augustine, I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. We all, sometimes things get tough, but I think everyone can find a reason to be thankful. What I'm most thankful for is as I look on social media and I see, no, not that stuff, guys, not that stuff. I see all of the, so many groups that are providing Thanksgiving meals and providing, you know, meals and help to people who may, may just, may not have their own meal. you know, meals and help to people who may, may just, may not have their own meal, or they may just want a little company, and they don't want to be alone on Thanksgiving. So, you know, I'm so thankful for, not that Karen doesn't have to cook, maybe she's thankful for that, but, you know, life changes, things get different. So actually, this year, we'll be spending Thanksgiving with our daughter, and she'll be hosting. So that hasn't happened in 30 years. That's never happened. And so we're not going to know quite what to do with ourselves, other than maybe wash the dishes, I guess. But I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Counsel, we do need an executive session. This will be real estate slash legal. I would appreciate findings.
Boom.
Thank you. Moved in second, it is your discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. And we'll need a motion to go into an executive session. The manager will be joining us. They're moved in second. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Any action?
No action, Dave.
Thanks, Mark. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you, David.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Second.
Bye.
Second. Oh, my step, don't do this. Bye. Ciao. Second. Oh. 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 Second. Oh.